Greetings and salutations everyone! I'm MacMac, this is Let's Play Cross Code New Home. In our last episode... A lot of lot happened! Lee figured out the connection between Sidwell and Sitrone. And then, she confronted him about it. There was a huge fight, things got a bit ugly there. But we got through in the end. Then we got woken up by Shazuka, who asked that we go drag her brother out of the lab because he is working himself to death again. She's got her work cut out for her because she's got to catch him up for the final dungeon which is coming out very, very soon! So much excitement! But yeah, she's catching him up meanwhile, we're hanging out with the guild to talk about the new dungeon. "Lee here! Lee dear, you're here!" "It looks like everyone is here." "Oh, except for Tronny." "Strange, he's not... usually not the type to be late." "Now that I think about it, he didn't seem all that enthusiastic when I contacted him." "Lee, do you mind quickly dropping by at his place to see what he's up to?" "Thank you dear, we'll be waiting here." Which one actually is his house? I can't remember. We're the only... well, we're one of the two that had... Hmm, okay, I guess we aren't the only one with a two-story house, it's just they didn't do the... internals for... they didn't do the second floor for most houses. "Hi." "Hello, Lee." "Me?" "Are you here to tell me about the meeting for the new dungeon?" "I don't know about it." "But to be honest, I'm not sure if I should join." Playing along with everyone else. "You know, yesterday I told you the truth, Lee." "Don't you think it'd be fair to let the others know as well?" "Wait." "Too soon, huh?" "I suppose." "There's still the chance I might remember something important." "At least I feel like something is still missing." "Wait, no, at least I feel like something is still missing." "What?" "I wish I knew." "Might just be wishful thinking, really." "You know..." "Maybe running the dungeon with everyone is a good idea to take my mind off it." "Okey dokey." "Let's go to that meeting." "Welcome everyone to the lovely city hall." "Rumors have been around for quite some time, but today it will finally happen." "The final temple will open." "The last trial for us seekers to take." "Wee, it's dungeon time!" "We should all do our ace together!" "Oh." "That again." "No thank you, I'd rather take my time." "Yeah, we grandpas should take things slowly." "Yeah, hehehehe." "Huh?" "I agree." "I'd rather not rush through it but enjoy it at my own pace." "But, a racing tradition!" "Lee, you will still great join the race, non?" "Uuuuuhhh." "Okay." "Ha, I knew I could count on you, Sherry!" "First scholars!" "We've heard you're preparing me an event to tackle the final dungeon." "We'd like to be part of this honourable endeavour." "Yes please." "Of course, please take a seat." "Alrighty, everyone." "Not really much to say here." "Let's run the temple together." "Those who want to race can race." "Let's all meet in front of the temple tonight when it opens, eh?" "Please no spoiling until any everyone is finished." "Roger ma'am." "Everyone make sure your gear is upgraded." "Yeah, I wanted to say that." "The time is to come for us seekers to finally complete this journey." "Hey Apollo, this is my spot up here." "I don't like how low my equipment is, but the problem is they never let me upgrade it." Oh, but there is something that I realised from watching Comet Foil. Um, I never looked at the... There's actually a top floor to this building. So many trades I could have gotten. So this is where I can turn, uh... Coral piece into fruit set, huh? Tough sand and palm apple. Green arbor, pink petal. Curly fern, spiky nut. So you're for the, uh... Guy's garden stuff? Oh, spice sets, that's nice. Mystery grapes, steel bamboo, virus, virus... Elderwood, elderwood. Okay, you're just spice sets for Guy's garden. Wait a minute. These giant cones never seem to grow into the same size as their violet kin, huh? "Beware!" "Swirling inside is what feels like thousands of bees." Right, that's why, because it's Kularo Temple again! I can never have anything nice. Coal platter in full course. And some sandwiches. All the usuals. I'm just keeping my eye out in case there's anything cool in here. Oh, so you're where I can get spice sets for, um... Natural sponge that usually lives under the sea. You'd be a good way to get my hands on the stuff I need for certain upgrades, huh? "Sir, why are you naked?" Anyway, yeah, I want to have a look at all my gear again, see if there's something I can catch up. Right, I remember why I was having such a hard time justifying these upgrades. So Champions Tau, I think comes from a post-boss. So we have to beat the dungeon in order to unlock the body armor. It can't feel like Lucky Lucky is really that worth it. Wait, what? Uh, that's weird. I very clearly missed something. Biggest stick. This is something we could actually get, but maybe this isn't too defensive gear and balance is important. Bear zirker claw. We just saw a trade for this stuff, right? Right, and here's all the food trades, but, um... Wait. Do they not have... Shoot, they don't have the DLC editions in here, that's really unfortunate. Ohhh, this game sometimes, sometimes this game. How am I supposed to catch up in item level when they don't... when they hide so much of it in places you can't get? So this actually gives you bonus experience trainer, that's nice. Whereas this gives you the exact opposite. It takes away your experience, but it increases your money arm, so it is still nice for grinding. And we all remember this nonsense. I'll look at biggest stick on my own time, not on... not during a recording. You know the problem is with throwing away the Meister gloves, it loses us the Royal Guard. And I love having Royal Guard, I also love having Repost, and those are things that I just can't bring myself to throw away. The helmet and the leg gear are the things that I'd be most happy to change, so Serene Bubble +... Mmm, so annoying. Trackwalker visor. Curious hothead. Just give me the rose cone! It'd be... it actually would be kind of a bad idea, bad game design, to introduce all these item trades but then not have the items yet in the game. See, this is actually stuff that I could get. Oh, what's actually worse is that they give you some focus shard, but it's not enough to actually trade for anything good. It seems kind of inconsistent. Imagine metal but really old and valuable. Then three antique tokens, I've run out, so whoops. Epic metal. You're the one with the epic metal, right, right, right. But you also won precious metal for it, whoops. Right, they always want those really valuable materials, don't they? So we need two epic metal, so we need three precious metal. So... Three precious metals. We do not have bears, Carter. We can get two from the Rookie Fall metal. Which isn't quite enough, but we can get the rest at where's it? Um, we can get the rest that we need from, um, the, uh, where? From Rainfall City, I can't think of the name off the top of my head. Guy's Garden? Alright, I was actually teleporting there, wasn't I? But yeah, I don't like how my head and leg gear have fallen behind like that, so even though I'm trading away tank stats to do so, I'll just have to be a bit more careful. Ohhh, right, we need a living bolt, too. I should not have left yet. Who has the living bolt? Why... Elderwood. Okay, um, give me a tick to skim over all of this. Oh wait, what? So wait, we can give you venom shroom and vivid water to produce more mellow water. That's interesting. And we can produce more shell nut by throwing in all of these. And more yellow sponge with these, that's a really weird but strangely efficient trading system? Okay, where is it? Where's the what's-it-wood? Barbecue baroque at Rookie Harbour, but we can also get it from puff plants. Puff plants are the pink ones, right? Oh wait, these... these versions don't give the... these versions don't give elderwood, we need to look elsewhere. My bad. Hey, I probably shouldn't be cutting in like this, but I will say that the Emily races, um... They aren't particularly... They feel like a bit of a pointless addition, especially in terms of achievements. Because you're only going to really play them... Okay, hear me out on this. You're either going to be a new player... You're either going to be a new player who's, um... You're either going to be a new player who doesn't know the maps and aren't capable of speeding through the dungeon properly, or you're going to be on New Game Plus and absolutely obliterate any everything and there won't be any challenge whatsoever. It just doesn't feel like there's much point to it. Anyway, with that, we can finally get our hands on that sentor stuff. So I guess that is all we need to do to tidy up our equipment levels, right? Ohhh dang it, dang it 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 dang it. We need so many antique tokens! And we already ran out of precious We need so many antique tokens, and we already ran out of precious metals. Okay, so go beat up bamboo. I feel like I should actually cut the episode here and do all my grinding off screen. Because uh, we've run out of interesting things to talk about. Next episode, I will definitely be prepared for all this nonsense, so until then guys, take care, I'll see you all around.